So we are on Agenda Item Number Nine, which is advising consent for the Salt Lake City Police Chief, Brian Redd. Oh, there you are. Yeah. I told you I had this question before. Officer, director, what title do I use? Come on down.
Brian.
Brian, all right.
Hello, Mr. Chair and council members. Thanks for having me today.
Yeah, thank you for being here. So this is your chance to tell us about yourself and about what you hope to bring to this position and for us to ask you questions and, I guess, give you our advice. So go ahead. If you want to take the time to start.
Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I thank you, Mayor Menon Hall, for this opportunity to come before the council. I first want to thank a few people. I have my family behind me here, who I appreciate coming and supporting me. I couldn't do it without them. Also, Executive Director Garcia from the Department of Corrections is here, who I've worked with for many years, and thank him for coming. And then I also want to thank all of the Salt Lake City Police Department officers who are here and supporting me today. Thank you. It means a lot. Just by way of background, I'm coming from the Department of Corrections. I've been there for the past two years, serving as the Executive Director. It's been an honor to serve the staff of the Utah Department of Corrections and also the incarcerated individuals. Prior to that, I spent two years working for a financial services firm here in downtown Salt Lake City. And prior to that, I served for 20, almost 21 years, in the Department of Public Safety, from state trooper to the Director of the State Bureau of Investigation and retired in 2021. So that's a little bit about me and excited for the opportunity to answer questions. Just, I don't take this responsibility lightly, and I just want you to know that I'm here to serve our officers, to ensure that they're supported, that they're taken care of, that we're listening to them. I think good ideas come from the ground up, and so we want to create a culture where our officers are heard and listened to and involved in the decision-making process in the department. And then we just want to serve the, and if we take care of them, they'll take care of the community. And they have done amazing work. I've worked side by side with many of the officers in the room here in the Salt Lake City area in the past. Just look forward to continuing to have those partnerships and work together to serve the residents. The only other thing that I'll say is it's important to me that we work closely with the community, we understand the concerns, we're available, and we serve in a way that, in an empathetic and compassionate way as we police in the community. And that's the commitment that I'll make and strive for if approved.
Thank you. Okay, council members, you want to go in district order or seating order?
You're not first.
I know, but it's second.
But as being first, I mean, I've always got words, but I'm going to think of more later. All right. So I was fortunate enough to have time with you, and so I'll put on the public record, I looked for people to say bad things about you. I wanted to know the worst. I wanted to know who questioned you, who didn't love you. And I live on the West Side, where Operation Rio Grande is referred to as Operation Leafblower. And even with that legacy, I cannot find anyone who has said anything bad about you. So I am thrilled to start from that place. I live in, this is a more complex place than anywhere else in the state.
Absolutely.
And our home on the West Side is possibly the most complex of all. My family immigrated here and other families represented here immigrated here, not for the hope of rule of law, but for the promise of it. But rule of law means a consistent application, whether you have a home or you don't, whether you tan easily or you don't, whether you speak with an accent or you don't. I would love for you to speak a little bit to the conversation that we've already had, one that's put me at ease, but I would love for my constituents, neighbors, concerned parties, to hear how you approach the difficult policing of complex communities, communities that suffer from socioeconomic distress, who are the front lines of the fentanyl crisis at the moment and will be the front lines of whatever crisis follows it. And just a little bit how you view policing. My officers, you guys know I love you, but I know someone else is going to ask about you, okay? So we've already divvied this up, okay? But those are my two concerns, making sure that our officers feel supported and that even our most vulnerable can expect a consistent, equal protection under the law.
Yeah, so I think what's important is that we espouse the values of the Police Department as we do our individual work, whatever role that we have. We have to live the values of the Police Department. They have to match the values of the community. And I think it's also important to have proximity. When you have proximity, when you get to know people or you get to know a community or an individual, that changes everything. So we have to come at the work in a compassionate and empathetic way, understanding the very difficult challenges. You know, working in the prison, a lot of those individuals have committed horrible crimes and they, rightly so, should be incarcerated. But when you look into the background of many of those individuals, many of them were also victimized, were also abused, and so there's a cycle that needs to be broken. So I think we need to police, obviously dealing with the crimes at hand, and we have to deal with the crime. We have to enforce the law. But we also need to work with the community to find the root causes and work with our partners to solve those root causes. And that takes proximity, it takes compassion and empathy and working in a way with integrity.
One more quick one. You and I talked about this again, this is just to allow people to hear on the public record. I myself find myself in love with the concept of restorative justice. As restorative justice gets implemented in my community, we actually lead ourselves to compassion fatigue, because what restorative justice tends to look like is this traumatized person gets to re-traumatize a neighborhood repeatedly. Can you speak a little bit to how we can preserve, you know, babies in bathwater? How we can still pursue something that is restorative and cutting-edge without forcing communities to disproportionately, I don't know, have nine bikes stolen from their house at the base level? Or have homeless women reporting that someone is aggressive and abusive and dangerous and not being heard? Can you speak a little bit to that?
We have to prioritize public safety and ensuring that, you know, individuals, even with all of the challenges that they have with their addictions and their mental illness and the lack of support from families, we still have to prioritize public safety first and then work with our partners in the social services system, crisis services system, to address the root causes of those things. But we have to have accountability first. We have a housing unit in the prison. It's called the Solid Program, and this is an inmate-led therapeutic community. And their key word in there is accountability. There has to be accountability. And we have to prioritize public safety first, and then we work on the restorative part.
Thank you. If there's seven of us, I'm going to let it go, but eventually, if we have more time, I do want to talk about the dry things like budget and all that kind of stuff.
I don't appreciate being second, but I like sometimes more time to put my thoughts together, but I appreciate Councilmember Petro for her lengthy, you know, questions, because it was, gave me a little time. But, you know, I, I mean, it's good to put a face, I've seen your face online, you know, in the press conference, the mayor presenting your recommendation. And I'm excited to read about your background and the work that you've done at the state and through your career. I'm also excited for your knowledge and feedback and some of the things that you mentioned already that you are open, you will tell us what you see, and that's what we need. You joined a department that is doing a great deal of good, that works, you know, over time, mandatory overtime, that are working their butts off in the streets. We have a department that, probably the most trained department in the state. I probably not, I have no doubt that there are the best officers in the state, live within the city, or at least work within the city. You also joined a department that, you know, is the capital city of a beautiful state, and we see in our streets the symptoms of a crisis that is bigger than our city. And it's not the consequence of lack of accountability from this side, but, or a sinister theory that we want our streets to be unsafe. But that there, these solutions are hard and complex, and these problems are not easy to solve. And I hope that you are able to cut through that with our mayor, to cut through that message, so we can work together to solve the problem. I don't care who takes the credit. And I hope that you join that, and I am excited for your record in the past to see that. I would like to ask you, how do you build trust within your officers, within your department, with my neighbors that are, you know, struggling, with those in the streets, and also with those leaders that just sometimes like to point fingers? How do you build trust?
Well, I think it's going back a little bit to what I said earlier, and that's proximity and time with people, with the community, time with the officers, and really listening to those on the ground who are experiencing the issues, listening to the officers who are out there day-to-day doing the work. I mean, they're ground zero, and they're going to have the best view of what works and what doesn't work. And who should get the credit? The credit should go to those on the ground doing the work. It should go to the officers, the residents working with the officers, those in the social services system that go out and provide the treatment and the programming. So I think we all work together. Let's not point fingers. Let's move forward and build partnerships, because you're right, the complexity on the streets of Salt Lake City is not going to be solved by the Salt Lake City Police Department alone. But we are going to do our part, we are going to work hard, and I know these officers in this department that I've worked with, and they're going to, they're going to, they're going to do, give it their all. And we just need all parts of the system, all levels of government, our District Attorney's Office, our jail, social services system, all doing our best. And it's not easy, but getting together and being proximate and working on the problem in a unified manner, we can make progress. It's not going to happen overnight, but I'm confident we can make progress.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Chair gets to go last, so, just kidding.
Just kidding.
I, what I want to see in our Police Department is, I think, a straightforward message, but a really complicated, seemingly impossible one to deliver, and that I just want the best. I want the best training for our officers. I want us to be the best, in terms of most competitive for recruiting a highly skilled and diverse police force. I want us to compensate them for the work that they do. And I want us to train them for the most difficult situations. And so to me, having, maintaining those high standards is really important. And we had a chance to talk about this in more detail. And I think, in my mind, as an attorney, having the best police force also means having officers that are respecting civil, the civil rights of the residents, respecting the civil rights of those that are being investigated. And so if you could just speak to that piece and what you think that you can bring to that role, both keeping the standards high and also respecting the civil rights and liberties of all residents.
I mean, it is my responsibility as the chief to ensure that we do have the best training and resources and support, and that we have the best approach in policing. And by the way, I want to thank you as a council, because I do feel, as we've had conversations, that you do support the Police Department and you want to be there to provide what we need, so thank you for that. But yes, we have, it's my responsibility ultimately to ensure that we protect the rights of our community, their right to, their ability to express their concerns, First Amendment rights. And we will just come in and evaluate the training, see where we're at, see if we have enough resources going to training. And, you know, we have a young, what I understand is we have a young Police Department, a fairly young Police Department with young officers. We have that in the Department of Corrections. So we do need to spend a significant amount of time and resources training those officers, making sure our first-line supervisors are sergeants who are critically important, who are managing the day-to-day work on the ground, making sure they have the training and resources. And then ultimately, we have to, at the top in the command staff, we have to be there to support them and monitor when there's correction that needs to be had. We need to, we need to make those corrections and make those adjustments, and we need to be transparent about what's going on and how it can improve.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought up transparency, because having been through the council prior to 2020 through 2020 and after, it, we talked about transparency and accountability a lot. And while it's the city's job and the council's job to make sure that our officers are well-trained and compensated and all that, it's also our job to ask questions about the Police Department, about our practices, about where we've, if there are instances where we've fallen short, what do we need to do as a council to make sure that that doesn't happen again? So it's not so much a question, but more a statement that, you know, we as a council need to be able to ask those questions and ask for that transparency and accountability on behalf of the residents. With, while at the same time, understanding that we have to have the role of also supporting our police and making sure that they have the training and resources and tools that they need. And that's a, that's a difficult balance for, I think, for us to do as well, as not, you know, I don't think any of us have any police training. So being able to ask those questions and understand where that's coming from. And then the last thing that I want to talk about is, if you want to speak to how you think that we can continue to recruit the best officers and how do we keep them?
Well, I think, and thank you on the transparency piece, and just know that you have my phone number, and I will, I will speak to you about, be transparent with you and with the community. It's not always easy as a chief to step and say we made a mistake as a department, not pointing fingers at one individual officer necessarily, but we need to do better, and but that's the, that's the way that I would like to move forward. But to your, I'm sorry, I forgot your second question. I just wanted to get that on.
And like recruiting and maintaining talent.
So number one, I mean, you know, we all want to provide for our families, so competitive compensation is key to getting people in the door for sure. But it's the culture, it's the, that keeps people, it's good supervision that keeps people in an organization. So there are a number of things that we need to do. We need to be concerned about the wellness of our officers and our civilian staff, our dispatchers, our crime lab personnel, our evidence response team, they also are integral to the department, and we need to take care of their wellness and make sure that everyone is compensated as well as possible. And, I mean, look, if we are supportive, I'm confident that people will stay at the Salt Lake City Police Department if we, if we take care of our officers, we're concerned for their welfare, for their family's welfare. There's an impact on families when you take a role on as a police officer. If we take care of the families and the officers, I think we'll have people stay at the Salt Lake City Police Department. This is an amazing department with a storied history, where you can come and have some of the most challenging and complex policing opportunities, but also some of the most rewarding. So I'm confident that as we compensate well, we provide good benefits, we provide opportunities for development, we have good leadership in the department, we can retain those officers.
That's, that's good to hear. You don't, again, you also don't have to comment on this, but I am worried about how, as a council, you know, we're one of only a few governments in the state that did recognize the right of collective bargaining before the change in the law. And that's something that's important to me, that we continue to be able to do. I'm not asking you to, to comment on that, but I will be curious to know, if you take this, take on this role, we're going to go right into budget season.
Right.
And, you know, how do we have those conversations about making sure that we're hearing the voices of our officers, even though we can't recognize them formally as a union like we used to? And that's, that's going to be new territory for us, so I hope you're ready for that as well.
Well, yeah, I don't know about all that, but I know we're going into the budget season, but what I would say is, we tried to listen intently to our officers in the Department of Corrections, and we were able to make some large financial, the legislature was able to fund them, some raises that made them competitive, which was helpful, but there were a lot of little things that we were able just to do, little benefits that made all the difference as well. So I'm all with you on listening to our officers and what they feel like they need.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez Chavez.
Thank you. Brian, thank you for taking the time, and thank you for offering yourself up to the city. I think it speaks volumes that I see some of my colleagues, friends, former coworkers in the city, and your family, of course, joining you today, so thank you for taking the time. My colleagues have covered a lot of different topics, and I just want to reiterate again that I want to hear from you, how you will serve, protect, defend, and nurture the actual residents of Salt Lake City. I hear your enthusiasm for our officers, and certainly their morale and rapport is needed and dire, but I want, I want to hear from your words, why do you want to be the Police Chief for every Salt Laker?
Well, when I came to the Department of Corrections, the, one of the first calls I made was to the Utah Prisoner Advocate Network, because they had a stake, they are, they represent the families of the incarcerated. So I do plan to communicate with our residents, with our businesses, be involved in the community. And I think as we lead our officers in a great way, that they will do the same. I know that many of the officers are already engaged well in the community, so we want to continue to foster and support that. But I think, again, I'll go back to the word proximity, and as we are close to the residents, as we're listening to them, and, you know, we know crime has gone down, but we know there are some who maybe still don't feel safe, and we have to take that serious. And when there are quality-of-life issues that we might see out in the communities, encampments, open-air drug dealing, public urination or defecation, all these types of things, noise complaints, I mean, we need to take those seriously as a Police Department and work in a combined way with the other city departments to try to resolve those issues. And so I hope that answers your question, but I do think it's important to be with the community as well.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think many of our residents are eager to know that they'll have a Police Chief that will be transparent, accountable, and responsive to their needs. Certainly, Salt Lake is a diverse place, it's complicated. I love it. It's a, it's home of the most peculiar people with the most beautiful hearts and minds. I want to hear, and you mentioned this, that you will defend their constitutional liberties. And so I'm very grateful to hear that. I want to ask you another question in regards to leveraging our PCRTs and alternative response models. What is your personal philosophies about leveraging alternative response models in modern, contemporary policing?
Well, I think they're, they're very important. We did have a conversation about some of this, but I know there are some, I know the co-responder model with our workers is very critical, and I think that that kind of gets to, you know, trying to address the root cause, not just the crimes that are occurring. I know there are other civilian response from, you know, for traffic crashes and different things like that, so I'm supportive of being creative and working with the community on those types of solutions and with our officers. So I think those are good. I think also the use of technology, you know, it's, adding additional officers are expensive, and I think at some point, we have to look at that right. But if we can utilize technology to make their jobs more efficient, we should utilize technology, and of course, we'll have those conversations with the community on what that looks like.
Thank you, Brian. My final statement slash question to you, Brian, is, as the council member of District Four, which encompasses greatly downtown, we are on the precipice of hosting the world, whether it's Sundance, the Olympics, major sports like NHL, NBA, MLB, or visitors coming from regional areas within the Wasatch Front to access our arts and entertainment spaces downtown. How will you, as a Police Chief, adapt to mass gatherings in our city?
Well, we will work with the community. Part of the reason I came is because of all the exciting things that are happening in Salt Lake City over the next number of years, and we will work to make sure that we are safe, working with our businesses, working with the community. And we have great officers in the department that will, will help manage the mass gatherings that are coming to our community.
Yeah, thank you. It is an exciting time, huh, Brian?
It is an exciting time in the city. There's no question about it.
All right, man. We might have to work together, okay?
All right, well, that's fine. You give me a call anytime you need something.
Probably not important. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Brian, thank you for being here. Thank you for your willingness to serve Salt Lake City. I do know you have a good reputation in the community. Even when you weren't with Salt Lake City, I know some of my constituents found you as a good resource for some of their issues, some of my business constituents and things like that, so I appreciate that. And Mayor Menon Hall, thank you for this recommendation. I know you did not take that, this decision lightly, and you certainly thought through this, so I appreciate that. I think this is a difficult, probably the most difficult job in the city. I certainly think it's probably the most political, non-elected position that...
I'm feeling it.
So that's, and I think that's, it's a tricky position to be in, and I'll just be completely transparent and vulnerable. Public safety's always been something that's been hard for me to know how to make decisions on, know how to serve my role as a council member in relation to those things. I was appointed in 2020, I think the reason why the council chose me at the time for that vacancy was because of my zoning and land use understanding. And then we all know what happened in 2020, really, our focus was public safety and policing. But it was from the side of people who didn't feel like they were being fairly policed and that they were, didn't feel safe in the presence of police officers. So that was, I was thrown into this very difficult position where I was being told that if I even supported the concept of having a Police Department, then I was racist. So from that to then, my campaign in 2021, I was, I heard from the opposite side of how people felt like I wasn't very strong on crime and that I had a difficult, so this has been a difficult situation just for me personally, but I think that that highlights that there are very different feelings about policing from very, from different sides of our community that are all important and should really feel, A, safe in their homes and their property and their businesses, but also feel like the Police Department is there to keep them safe, whether they are a business owner or property, or whether they are down on their luck and not currently housed. So, and anywhere in that spectrum. And I'm not, I don't want you to necessarily, at this point, talk about how you're going to accomplish that, but how, would you, as the Police Chief, be able to interface with those people who have those different views and hold both of those lived experiences in the same, in the same hand?
Well, I mean, I had some of those experiences in 2020, and that was one of the responsibilities I had in the Department of Public Safety, was to bring together... I had in the Department of Public Safety, was to bring together police chiefs and sheriffs and, you know, people who didn't necessarily like the police at all, and try to build bridges and get understanding. But I guess what I would say to it, because you're right, I can't say how we're going to solve that all in one day. But what I would say is, it's one interaction at a time. It's one positive interaction at a time. And, you know, when you have the number of police officers in the Salt Lake City Department, it's our responsibility to work with our officers, to develop the values of the department, and then, one interaction at a time, police in that way. And, look, policing is dangerous. Our officers are put at risk every day. And so it's a tough, it's a tough balance. But I think just working together and policing with good values and having one good interaction at a time, and those build up over time.
I appreciate that. And I'll just say, one thing, again, I don't know that, I certainly don't have the answer to this, but I just hope that as you take this role, you'll remember that regardless of where anyone is on that spectrum, they're someone that we're trying to protect and have them trust, both our government and our policing. But thank you for being willing to do this. I'm excited for this new era of the Salt Lake Police Department that you'll help.
Thank you. Thank you for the advice and the insight. I appreciate it.
Number six. So, thank you, Brian. And thank you also for the conversation Councilman Wharton and I had with you the other day. It was very insightful, and I really appreciate the depth that you bring to the position. I think most of the council members so far have kind of touched on some of the questions and issues I had. But I want to go back to the, you talked about training for a little bit, and, you know, training on some of the physical stuff is pretty cut and dry. You either make it, or you don't make it. It's pretty clear. But it's the soft skills that are the hard ones to train on and also to embed in someone's brain, and also to make sure that they actually have those in their core themselves. And we talked about the core values and the culture. And those are the soft skills that we not only need to train for the new hires, but the old goats. Because sometimes those are the most difficult to not, to adjust. But they make sure that those core values are coming from the leadership, and that culture is coming from the leadership down. And that we, and so this is kind of like a question and also the vice, and I think we kind of touched on this earlier, was that, you know, would the pressures always to increase the force to full capacity, there's sometimes a pressure to hire just for numbers' sake. And so my point is, and we talked about this, don't lower their standards. The basic standards are the physical side of the house, but the soft side of the house, we can't lower standards on the culture, we can't lower standards on the core values, because if we do that, that's just a bad recipe for disaster later on. So I just urge you to make sure that, from the leadership down, we're strong on those core values and that culture, and it's clear to everybody, and we're training that every day, along with the rest of that. Because it goes back to the idea of the civilian response teams, the chat teams, all that brings us back to the community really feeling like the police are there for their community, and that they bring that confidence in them, because those soft skills of the core values are there. So more of a, I guess you can respond to that, but that's more of a piece of advice, vice question.
I would just say thank you and good advice, and I appreciate it.
Councilmember Young.
All right. I'm number seven. Thank you for being here. We really appreciate it. And I want to honor the fact that you come with an incredible resume in terms of your ability to be able to come into a new system, maybe not a system that's your, you know, direct, full, you know, professional experience, but to come in and to develop relationships and to help address not just needs, but also amplify areas of success. And that's one of the things that I wanted to ask you. So I appreciate you are, you are still very new to meeting everyone, but I would love to hear if you've identified any existing areas of success that are happening right now in Salt Lake City Police that you want to make sure we maintain and amplify.
Well, I know and I observe, the officers are working very hard in the department to meet all of the demands, all of the demands in responding to the crime that occurs, in trying to address the quality-of-life issues. And they are very dedicated. And so I think they are some of the best trained. I think they do have a deep bench. And so I want to continue to support that. I know there are willing people in the department that want to make a difference. And so I think that's our greatest strength.
Thank you for sharing that. One of the things that I've been most impressed by in the short time that I've had the opportunity to know you, hasn't actually been anything that you've said. It has been the way you have acted. And I'll give one example. I was with Councilmember Petro when we had an opportunity to chat with you on Friday of last week. As I was exiting the building, I had the absolute pleasure of walking by the desk and watching you, taking the time to introduce yourself and to meet all of our officers. And as I was eavesdropping, as I do, walking by the desk, I really appreciated hearing you say, I really want to know what's working and what's not. And you being open to listening to the responses. I know that's not the first time you've done that. You did that when you came home from the airport from a recent presentation. I've watched you do it other places as well. And to me, that gives me confidence in you as a leader, that it's not just being able to talk the talk like you have today, but that you walk that walk. And that is what I think is very inspiring as we move forward. I want to give you the opportunity to respond to one other aspect that I know we've talked about, and you've touched on here today, but just to give it a direct answer. As we think about our police officers, I know one of the lenses they use, in terms of the camaraderie that they build, is would I take this person with me into a gunfight? And that because your amazing professional history has been in other areas of law enforcement, that, you know, there can sometimes be some concern that you haven't had those direct experiences that many of our police officers do every day. How are you going to bridge that gap so that they want to take you with them into a gunfight?
Yeah. Well, first of all, my respect to the officers, whether they've been here three months in Salt Lake City or 30 years in Salt Lake, doing the work here on these streets. And I won't, I won't say that I understand every aspect of what they do. And so part of what I need to do is come in and listen. I've always tried to be a leader that's been there and available when tough things are happening, whether it's standing on the steps of the Capitol during the protests in 2020, or in the mountains of the marijuana gardens, going after those in the cartels. But, look, I'm not going to sit here, and I haven't been a beat cop for 30 years on the street. That hasn't been my role. And so I'm going to respect what they're doing, and I will earn their trust over time, I hope. And I hope they'll give me a chance if there's skeptics.
Thank you.
You bet.
From what I have seen, you're already on your path there. And I hope you continue to do those actions and being able to connect with our officers, because that's what allows you to come to us as council and say, these are the resources we need to be able to make sure we're the number one in terms of not just being able to have the best public safety, but to provide the compensation that's necessary regardless of state actions when it may come to unions. I know that as, having sat with these individuals before, our commitment to keeping our police officers at the top of the list is consistent. And we rely on you to be able to speak for those needs so that we can come to you with the resources necessary to make it happen. My last comment actually goes to your family. I am so grateful that each of you are here today, not just to support Brian, but also because you become part of our family here, too. The job he takes on is not something that is easy, as I'm sure you've heard today. And I am grateful that you are willing to share him with us as a city and as a community. I'm committed to making sure we take good care of him. And thank you for the sacrifice you make in regards to supporting him in this role.
All right. Any other thoughts, anything else? Any other parting words you'd like for?
I think I've said enough. But I just want to say thank you again to you all in the council, and again, to Mayor Mendenhall. And I'll serve my best if approved.
Well, thank you. So we will put your name on the agenda for tonight for an up or down vote.